Well, good morning, everyone. I think I'm two minutes late, but it's worth it to get to talk to everybody a little bit. This time I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session order for this October the 22nd, 2024. Glad to have Doris Devi in the audience with us, and she's going to sing the National Anthem now. Oh. We're very glad to have a couple of invited guests this morning. Allison, let's say Katie Owens and Allison Melcher are here, and they're going to speak to us here in a minute. So glad to have you all. If you've got your phone on, please turn that off. And Tommy, if you want to bring the list forward. I'm sorry, I got your name wrong. Thank you. Appreciate it. This time, privileged to have a county attorney, Jason Phillips, to bring us our invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Dear Lord, we come to you, we come to you now, Lord, in this room as we always do. We ask for your wisdom and your guidance regarding the items that appear on this agenda regarding the decisions that will be made. Lord, we pray that you would be here and you would guide these five commissioners to make decisions that are consistent with what you want for Paulding County. And lay it upon their hearts, lay it upon their minds. Lord, we'd also ask that you be with our election staff, our full-time staff, our part-time staff, Lord. 20,000 voters have come through the doors downstairs in the last week and a half. Lord, we'd ask that you would be with those staff members, help them to do the best job they can possibly do in running our elections. Lord, help the machinery and the equipment and the procedures to all proceed forward flawlessly. Lord, we ask that you would be with those people that stand in the end of a line, sometimes at the edge of the parking lot. Lord, we pray that there would be civility and friendliness amongst those that stand in line together. Although they may have different political views, Lord, we just ask that you would be with them, bless them. Help this to be a smooth process, and, Lord, help love to prevail overall despite any differences we may have on issues. We thank you, Lord. We lift all of this up, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And folks, I'd like to add to our welcome Jim Tully, who works with Representative Green. And so good to have you with us, Jim. The minutes of October the 8th, 2024, work session minutes and the board meeting minutes themselves are available for review. Announcements this morning, we have done another Team Paulding, which is one of my favorite things of the month. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to revoke that and say what we've got today for our announcements. It includes Team Paulding is the Ride for Wishes event we did a couple of Saturdays ago, so let's enjoy that.
This is different from anything else we've done, that we don't do a bike ride anywhere else. And so that's something that's really unique and special about this event. I was talking to some folks about that this morning, and I think that brings a lot of people out. And I remember when Frank had the idea for this, it was he wanted it to be something that was unique to Paulding County. And so let's take advantage of something that Paulding County has, and you have the Silver Comet Shell right there. But these types of events, as far as where the money goes, that's something that's very unique about Make-A-Wish Georgia. So the way we're set up, all the money that's raised from these local events funnels into Make-A-Wish Georgia so that we can raise money to grant wishes for kids right here in Georgia and right here in Paulding County. We've raised over $75,000 over that time. But in that time, what's really special about that is he's brought the community together time and time again. And we've been able to grant wishes like we did for Oliver and his family this past May.
We're here at the Paulding Rides for Wishes, and we were selected to go on a wish trip from Make-A-Wish. Oliver was diagnosed with a rare type of cancer called hepatoblastoma. It's a liver tumor, and so we went through six rounds of chemotherapy. He had a resection surgery, but we're very thankful. He is here with us, and we're enjoying our lives, and that part of that was going on a Make-A-Wish trip. We were able to go to Disneyland. One thing that really got us through treatment, specifically Oliver through treatment, was watching Disney videos of Disneyland and Avengers Campus and Marvel and Spider-Man. And so that was his wish that he chose was to meet Spider-Man, and so we're so thankful Make-A-Wish made that possible for us.
If you have our website at georgia.wish.org, and there's ways to volunteer, there's ways to fundraise, and just all kinds of ways to get involved, just give us a call.
Good work on the drone cameraman there, Philip Todd, and also Jeff Harkins, who's the director of our public information. I love those overhead shots. So Katie Owens from Upper Coosa River Program, and she's the director with the Nature Conservancy. And Allison Melcher, with Wildlife Biologist with Georgia Department of Natural Resources. They're going to speak to us on conservation easement and the dug-down corridor burn headquarters project. So ladies, if y'all want to step to the podium there, and just delighted to have you here with us. How far did you have to come?
It's about 40 minutes or so.
Yeah. Well, thanks. At least you're going opposite traffic, right?
That's right, yeah, wrong. So thank you, guys, for having us today. Again, I'm Katie Owens. I'm the Upper Coosa Program Director for the Nature Conservancy.
And I'm Allison Melcher. I'm the Senior Wildlife Biologist with Region One in Game Management for the Georgia Department of Natural Resources.
So I'm going to spend a couple of minutes telling you guys a little bit about the Nature Conservancy and kind of what we do in Paulding County before we get into this easement. But I do want to start by saying, I've been with the Nature Conservancy for 17 years. I've been working in Paulding County for 17 years, and Paulding County, hands down, is one of the best counties to work with in terms of conservation in all of our Northwest Georgia. So I work the entire Northwest Georgia corridor, and you guys are incredible, both from an aquatic and terrestrial standpoint. So thank you, and I hope you learn a little bit about what you have in your backyard. If you don't already know that, know why we really want to be working here. So just for those people who have never heard of the Nature Conservancy, I'm guessing you guys have heard of Georgia Department of Natural Resources and the state-owned land, but a lot of people haven't heard of the Nature Conservancy. So we're one of the largest conservation groups in the world. Sorry. Okay. So one of the largest conservation groups in the world. We work in all the states and over 30 different countries. So I work specifically for our Georgia chapter, and if you're looking at the map there, that shows the entire state of Georgia. We work all over the entire state. We have four major river systems that we really focus in on. In our area here, we are in an area that's called the Upper Coosa River System. So that includes the Etowah River and portions of the Tallapoosa River. So that's the kind of priority systems here, close to Paulding. the Tallapoosa River. So that's the kind of priority systems here close to Paulding County. And we have four major, what we call terrestrial fire offices. One is in Rome, or really, we're north of Rome, in our merchy. So that's where both Allison and I are based, is our merchy, though we work in Paulding County and have sub-offices here as well. So I want to take just a couple of minutes to tell you why we're really here. So the Nature Conservancy, again, is this huge conservation organization, right? And we use science to kind of drive all of our work. Well, in Paulding County, you guys have really something incredible in your backyard, both from an aquatic standpoint, thinking about our river systems, but also from a terrestrial standpoint, thinking about what we have in our forest. So this slide here shows some of the aquatics. And if you look at the map on the right, that's showing the entire Etowah watershed, right? So the greens, the yellows, the pink is Lake Altoona, and then the white is as you get closer to Rome. But if you guys notice, the green that's embedded in between the white and the yellow, the green is where you want to be. That's where most of what we call our biodiversity is. So in terms of numbers of fish, mussels, crayfish, that's where those species are found. So notice that the upper Etowah, up around the Appalachian Trail, Dillonaga, Dawsonville, that's where we have most of our species, right? And then you get close to Lake Altoona, your species start dropping off because the lake has what we call a backwater effect. But then you get to Paulding County, and you have this incredible 35,000-acre stronghold of species that we don't see anywhere else in the Etowah watershed. So from a, when we think about conservation and where are the areas that we need to protect, to really protect all of these fish and mussels, it's right here in Paulding County and Barto County. So what we call Raccoon Creek, it's a 35,000-acre watershed, and the majority of it is in Paulding County, and then you've got a little bit of it in Barto County before Raccoon Creek flows back into the main stem Etowah. So Raccoon Creek has been a high priority for my group, the Nature Conservancy, but also Georgia Department of Natural Resources and United States Fish and Wildlife Service for 20-plus years now. So we've been really trying to work closely with the county, all of your people that live in the county, on how do we protect these different populations of fish and mussels and crayfish and things in this river system. And just to give you a little bit of context, the greater Etowah watershed has 76 fish found in that entire map, right? Here in Paulding County, you have over 40 of those different fish that's right here in your backyard. So it's really, really incredible from a fish standpoint, from a conservation standpoint. And then just to compare that to the United States, if you look at the map on the left, that's showing the Colorado River watershed. So notice the Colorado River watershed is usually, is actually like a huge portion of the western United States. Everything in red is showing the Colorado. There are 25 native fish in all of that red, and you guys have 40-plus native fish in the Raccoon Creek watershed right here in Paulding County. So again, just to kind of give you some context to what kind of special things you have in your backyard. So that's from an aquatic standpoint, and I did throw up two of what I call the money fish. These fish have really brought in a lot of conservation money into Paulding County. So the bottom left is a fish that we call the Etowah Darter. It's a federally endangered species. It's endemic. That means it's found nowhere else in the world except right here in the Etowah. And then the fish on the right is called the Cherokee Darter, another endemic, so only found right here in the Etowah watershed. And Paulding County has one of the best strongholds of these two federally endangered fish. So it definitely results in a lot of conservation money, especially from Fish and Wildlife Service being able to come into your county and do different things. So I'm going to talk about an easement today, but just know that these fish have helped change out bridges in the county, change out culverts in the county. They've brought a lot of money into doing work in the forest. So these are really good things for you guys to have in the county. So the fish are one piece of the puzzle, and usually, there's like one conservation species I can point to in a county that brings a lot of money and brings a lot of excitement. You guys have something really neat here in Paulding County, because not only do you have the fish under the water that are bringing in all this money, from a terrestrial standpoint, you have something called the mountain longleaf ecosystem, or Montane longleaf. And for those of you who aren't familiar with that, the mountain longleaf would have been the dominant pine across the southeast. So if you're looking up at the slide, the map that shows the green is the historic range of longleaf. So again, that longleaf pine would have been the dominant pine throughout the southeast. Now, we have clear-cut the majority of that pine, or we've done fire suppression with our Smokey the Bear campaign. There's resulted in a lot of loss of that mountain longleaf pine. But that said, you guys still have, here in Paulding County, one of the best strongholds of old-growth mountain longleaf in all of Northwest Georgia. There's really only three locations where we have some strongholds of mountain longleaf. We've got some in the Chattahoochee National Forest, in Floyd County and Shetuka County. We've got some at Berry College in Floyd County, and then we have right here in Paulding County, in Paulding and Sheffield Wildlife Management Area. So in addition to the fish, this mountain longleaf brings in a lot of money into Paulding County to help us manage the forest at a large scale where we don't see across the rest of Northwest Georgia. And for those of you who are unfamiliar with the mountain longleaf, it's basically considered a rare ecosystem now because it's only found in northwestern Georgia and northeast Alabama. And the thing that's important about the mountain longleaf is it's fire-dependent. So you would have naturally had fires rolling across the ridges here in Paulding and Barto County. And although we've suppressed fire, we've really done a really good job, I would say, in the past 15 years in bringing fire back into this county and opening up the forest. And when we're opening up the forest, I kind of threw two pictures up there of things that we see a good bit of. On the far left is the eastern fox squirrel. So the fox squirrel, we've seen rebound from really good populations in Paulding County. So when we brought fire back in, when we were able to open up the forest floor, we saw the eastern fox squirrel kind of move back into the area. So that's really exciting. And then the picture next to that is what we call the northern pine snake. For other folks might know it as the bullnose snake, and it's a snake that actually is a fossorial species, meaning it lives underground most of its life. So it's not, it's not very easy to see this snake, but it's an incredible snake, pretty rare, and it's found right here in Paulding County. So we've been working with universities to track this snake for quite some time. And that's another thing I'll mention, all of our work with both the aquatics and the terrestrial, we have a really good relationship with the Paulding County school system. So we're working with, you know, teachers and students on all the projects that the Nature Conservancy and Georgia Department of Natural Resources are doing out in the field. So we're very thankful for what Paulding County has in their backyard and everything you've done to work with us on both the mountain longleaf and the aquatic species. So really, why are we here today? I told you guys, you know, we've been focusing in on what we call the Raccoon Creek watershed. This map here shows that Raccoon Creek watershed, again, is 35,000 acres. It's really been the driver for conservation work in Paulding County. If you look at the map on the left, that was back in 2011. And if you look at the dark green areas, those are the permanently protected lands. And then zoom over to the right, that's a 2022 map. You can see the amount of land protection that's happened in and around this Raccoon Creek watershed, you know, for the past 10, 15 years. It's really been a major priority of all the agencies, federal and state, and really your conservation nonprofit groups like the Nature Conservancy in this Paulding County area. And what I think is really exciting is if you're looking at that brighter green on the bottom, the southern end of the map, that was back in 2007, a SPOSS referendum that you guys passed where you purchased some land as the county. So we kind of work with you, mostly Georgia Department of Natural Resources, to help manage that land. And then Georgia DNR and the Nature Conservancy continue to try to purchase land to continue this protection effort in the county. So we don't see that very often. It's hard to get counties to work with us on land protection. We do have some success stories similar to this in Paulding and other counties. But again, you guys, I would say, are hands down one of the best counties to understand what kind of incredible things you have under the water and on the land and to try to protect those resources for your community. So I said we've been focusing on what we call this, you know, Raccoon Creek area, and that's definitely true. But I would say about 10 years ago, we started thinking like, how do we protect conservation at a larger scale? So we're really proud of what we have going on here in Paulding County. But really, to make a difference in conservation at a larger scale, we have to think big picture. So this map here shows what we call the dug-down mountain longleaf corridor. And so the vision behind this map is we're trying to connect Paulding and Sheffield Wildlife Management Areas right here in Paulding County, westward all the way to the Talladega National Forest in Alabama. So you can see the Tallapoosa River is kind of the southern boundary of this corridor. And if you notice the highlighted, there's two red highlighted areas and two green highlighted areas kind of in the middle of the corridor. That's over 10,000 acres. We've already purchased that either under the Nature Conservancy or the Conservation Fund and other nonprofit group, and those are being sold back to Georgia DNR. So the vision is Georgia DNR will have a protected corridor that's connecting Paulding County all the way over to the Talladega National Forest. So we're working as quickly as we can to try to pick up lands and create this corridor. And I feel like, you know, our map shows the success story, right? I mean, doing conservation work is not fast. It's slow and tedious. But in the past few years, we've been able to add these 10,000 acres, which is really a big piece of the puzzle to creating this corridor. But what does that mean for, you know, Paulding County and the Nature Conservancy and Georgia DNR? Adding land and, you know, permanently protecting these sites is one piece of the puzzle, but we can't just protect land and walk away. We have to actually physically manage the land, too, and that's kind of why we're here today. So we work with Paulding County on, you know, all these different conservation measures. And one of the pieces of the puzzle is, we can bring capacity to the table. We can bring people to the table to help you guys in the county manage the land. But one of our biggest hurdles has been, we house what we call all of our fire teams and our staff in our merchy. So we're about 40 minutes from here, working in Paulding a good bit. But years ago, we started working with the county, saying there's one piece of parcel that we really want to purchase, very close to Paulding and Sheffield Wildlife Management Area, and it would be a good county-owned land. And we asked that the county collaborate with the Nature Conservancy and Georgia DNR on purchasing this land and allowing us to put a facility on the land where we would be able to house these seasonal burn crews. So we bring in western firefighters, and then we work with all the local universities like Kennesaw State University, University of West Georgia. So we bring in juniors and seniors and have them fill our fire teams so we can train the next level of conservationist. So that brings me to, why are we really here today? So again, we worked with Paulding County to help purchase this, what we call the Jones 100 Parcel. This kind of shows the location of the parcel. It's very close to Lee Road and Tibbetts Road. It's right over 100 acres, and it was purchased because of the conservation benefit. So it's got the main stem of Raccoon Creek, that high biodiversity tributary in it. It also has the mouth of what we call Pegamore Creek, which is a really big tributary to Raccoon Creek. So from an aquatic standpoint, this is a phenomenal site for the county to own. Has a lot of, a lot of opportunity to bring students on, to bring teachers on, to do research. And it has uplands that provides an opportunity for the Nature Conservancy and Georgia DNR to build a small facility where we can house our burn crews and our staff here in the county so we can get more work done and have more equipment and things based right here in Paulding County. So this track was already purchased, and I'll go over what really, the meeting today is focused on four different agreements or pieces of the puzzle that we need to happen in order to move forward with the Nature Conservancy and Georgia DNR being able to build a facility on this property. So the Nature Conservancy got some settlement money years ago when Transco put a pipeline through Paulding County and neighboring counties, and Fish and Wildlife Service asked us to designate a portion of that money to help with the purchase of this track. So we said we can do that, but we have to make sure a conservation easement goes on the track in order to ensure that it's permanently protected. So we're at that stage today, where you guys will see in front of you today, a conservation easement that's from the Southeastern Trust for Parks and Land. It's a group that's really set up perfectly for this type of easement. Basically, that group holds easements on county-owned lands that allow public access. So the public will be able to get on this piece of property. It's owned by the county. Our idea is the uplands will be managed into Montane longleaf, and obviously, the creek will just be looking to permanently protect so we can protect those species. So that's one of the things you'll see today is the conservation easement for Southeastern Trust for Parks and Land. And then the Nature Conservancy, since we're giving money to the county to help with this purchase and would like to try to build a facility on the land, we've asked for a right-of-first refusal, which means if Paulding County is going to sell the land, my group, the Nature Conservancy, would like to be the first group to try to purchase the land and keep it as a conservation land. And then the two other pieces of the puzzle are what we call grant agreements. So again, Fish and Wildlife Service said, Nature Conservancy, we want you to give $150,000 to Paulding County to assist with the purchase of this land that's tied back to these Transco dollars. And then working with Paulding, you guys, again, are, you know, one of our great counties to work with, and you said, okay, we will assist with establishing roads and utilities on that land. So you're going to give $150,000 back to the Nature Conservancy that we're just going to put back into the land, help establish the road access points onto that new parcel, which will allow Nature Conservancy, Georgia DNR, and Paulding County to be able to actually get into the parcel itself. So those are kind of the four big pieces of the puzzle. They're the last steps that have to happen for us to build a facility. And I will say, we're already pretty far along in the concept of building a facility. So the Nature Conservancy hired Pitra Architecture out of Rockmart to design a facility for us that would be functional for the Nature Conservancy, Georgia DNR, and Paulding County to use in the future. And so this picture shows the designs. I actually got the final designs literally yesterday. So I have the designs in hand, ready to bid. And in order for us to be able to build this actual facility, we have to get the easement and these three other documents, right-of-first refusal and the two grant agreements signed. But this will be really a game changer, I would say, for the Nature Conservancy and Georgia DNR. We have a shop off of Brazel Mountain Road right now, and again, we have offices and other facilities in the our merchy area. But this allows us to bring all of the resources that we have housed on state land in our merchy right here to Paulding County. And I think it'll open up incredible opportunities for education and outreach for Paulding County, which the Nature Conservancy and Georgia DNR are both interested in collaborating on Paulding County with. So I'm happy to take any questions or happy to wait till the end to answer any questions.
The Etowah and Cherokee Darters are listed as threatened. What threatens them?
Well, so the Etowah Darter is federally endangered. So they're both federally listed, and the Cherokee Darter is federally threatened. So when, you can have different types of listing, right? If they're federally listed, it's the highest amount of listing that you can have. They're protected by the Endangered Species Act. So Fish and Wildlife Service is closely monitoring both of those fish species. The next level would be like if it's Georgia State listed, and there would still be, you know, implications for building and things like that, sediment runoff, if it was Georgia State listed. But when it's federally listed, it's the strongest of listings.
County manager, and seven years ago, went up to KSU one Saturday morning and met with a PhD philosopher, faculty member up there, and he called Paulding County a gym. So everybody in the audience, you live in a gym.
That's right. That's probably Bill Einstein, and yeah, there's, yeah.
I have a question also. So you said this land would be publicly available. The Paulding Forest, as we call it, WMA, whatever you want to call that over there, it is available, but you had to pay. So the county buys it with taxpayer money, and then we had to pay to go on it. And then the state buys part of it with also our taxpayer money. And so is this going to be like that, so that we had to pay to get on that land? Or is it going to be that people can go up and park and go on that land, just like a regular park?
So this is already, it's already owned by the county. I mean, the county physically owns that track. And I would say, really, it's up to you guys, right? On, like, you don't have to pay to access the land. It's an open piece of property. I think, I would say, think strategically about, you know, what you want in terms of access. But from my standpoint, I would say, having trails on that land that people could, you know, park and walk on would be a good thing. And there's already existing trail systems on that particular track. So the uplands right now are all mostly pine, loblawli pine. I think you could convert that to longleaf pine over time and use this as a good demonstration site for the county on this is how, this is what would have naturally been here in terms of mountain longleaf. And that's something that our two groups would love, you know, to assist the county with. But I think as a fishing site and whatnot, to have some access would be great. So, and the whole point of that Southeastern Trust for Public Lands, I mean, that is a group that's designated to have easements on open public lands. I mean, that's really what they're designed for. So the whole idea behind this track is, let's figure out how to let the county maximize the use of Raccoon Creek and the uplands. And, you know, obviously, from our standpoint, we don't want to see tons of road systems and traffic, and the easement limits that. But I think, you know, your question is a great question. I think we should have it open to the public. The question is, how do you, you know, have it open and manage it efficiently, but not, you know, put too much traffic on it? And I think that's one we just need to have more collaboration on. But I think that's the answer, is let the community enjoy what you have in your backyard.
And I'll add also, it wouldn't be added to the WMA, so it really would be up to the county, yeah. So it wouldn't be managed by DNR or anything like that.
Great. Thanks. Great, thanks.
Anyone else?
That was a great presentation. Thank you.
Oh, no problem. All right. Thank you all.
Mr. SDs, don't, don't ask them what the, the darters, what the bait they like is. Okay. Yeah, just don't ask them what the bait used to catch these darters is.
Well, I'm asking how big are the darters? Are they this big?
You gotta have a little bit of.
Yeah, two to five, two to five inches normally.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks again for being here and I agree with Sandy. It's a great presentation. Next thing we have is bid awards. We've got four this morning. Item two is discuss action to award the Azalea Lakes Drainage Improvement Project. SW 24-01 to the lowest bidder, SH Creel Contracting, in the amount of $97,727.20. The project's located in post one and will be funded by, with the general funds from the stormwater budget. Mr. George Jones.
Morning.
Morning.
Paulding County Stormwater Division requested quotes for the drainage improvement project known as Azalea Lakes Drainage Improvement Project, SW 24-01. The project is located in post one between address points 355 and 377 Azalea Lakes Drive. Project consists of extending the closed drainage system and all the appropriate impacts of that, along with 24-inch pipe to improve flow and eliminate soil erosion. Quotes were received on September 12th, 2024. DOT Stormwater has reviewed the quotes and recommends award to the lowest responsive bidder, SH Creel Contracting LLC, in the amount of $97,727.20. The bid was about 8% over our engineer's estimate. Funding for this project, if approved, will be allocated from the stormwater budget. Creel has not done work for Paulding County before, but they have done work for Cobb County Stormwater.
And item number three is discuss action authorized the chairman entered into a contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated in the amount of $882,852.9 for professional engineering, uh, design services for the New Hope Corridor Improvement Project. Funding will be allocated from special purpose local option sales tax funds. The project's located in post one and also in post four.
Yes, sir. Dallas-Aquithrough Highway, County Route 710, is a two-lane minor artillery roadway located, like you said, in post one and post four. Connects Dallas to the Crossroads Community up at Highway 92. This particular project's expected to encompass the area just south of Bobo Road going to north of Dewest Road. This section of Dallas-Aquithrough Highway has a pretty good amount of traffic on it, about 15,000 plus per day. Gets very busy during peak times, particularly the AM peak hour and PM peak hour, a lot of traffic backups. You've got some traffic signals and intersections out there, very close together. Bobo Road intersection at Dallas-Aquithrough and the East Paulding, Old Cartersville intersection, they're less than 1,000 feet away. And then you also have the, like I said, Old Cartersville, East Paulding intersection is about 700 feet away from the Dewest intersection. So you've got some important, you know, vehicle collecting roadways carry significant amount of traffic on those side streets. And they're all very close together, which basically impacts negatively traffic flow and safety. On July 26th, 2024, Paulding County DOT requested a request for proposals for qualifications-based engineering services to provide scoping preliminary engineering and final design engineering services for this project. On September 13th, 2024, nine engineering firms provided proposals for review by the selection committee. From those proposals, staff looked at and shortlisted four firms for interviews, presentations. After this selection process, the committee selected Kim Lee Horn and Associates as the team most qualified to complete the design services for this project. Like I said, if this project is approved, it'd be funded by SPOST and the amount of the contract is $882,852.9. Again, if approved.
Yeah, one more bid award from Mr. Jones. It's item four, which is discuss action to award emergency drainage repairs for Seminole Drive Phase One Drainage Pipe Reclamation, project number SW 24-05, Phase One to Jensen's Pressure Grouting Services in the amount of $68,130. Project's located in post one and will be funded through the general funds from the stormwater budget.
As you said, Chairman, Paulding County DOT Stormwater has a drainage improvement project, undefined as Seminole Drive Phase One Pipe Reclamation Project, project number SW-24-05, located between 158 and 198 Seminole Drive in the Indian Springs subdivision located off Bobo Road in post one. Since the project was identified, there's been a significant deterioration of the corrugated metal pipe that goes underneath the roadway, impacting up to 14 lots or past that particular point. In order to reduce the construction time and keep the roadway open, we requested quotes from Spin Casting Company essentially to do an in-place pipe rehabilitation project. Essentially, it's called trenchless technology, eliminates the need to take out the pipe and put in a new pipe. The project consists of hand spin casting the existing 60-inch, you know, rigid corrugated metal pipe, stabilizing soils with polyurethane and fill an existing 8-inch pipe that goes through this particular pipe. If approved, this will be the first project that DOT Stormwater has used for spin cast. Due to the urgent nature of this work, we contacted multiple companies for work. We recommend award to the second lowest bidder, which is Jensen's Pressure Grouting Services in the amount of $68,130. They can get on the work immediately. The other company that could provide the work, they had a lower quote, however, they had a five-week timeframe to get out there. We just assumed get this project underway, complete. You know, again, if, if approved, this funding for the project be located from General Fund Stormwater and is located in post one.
Any questions for George?
How long is this project going to take, George, with the different method that they're using?
Yeah, it'll, it'll take a few days.
Just a few days?
Yeah.
Okay, as compared to?
You know, taking out a 60-inch pipe, it would take probably three weeks or so. Again, there's other parts of this project stabilizing the actual shoulders and such that there's going to be some other work that's done by another contractor or DOT forces, but getting this pipe rehabilitated and filled.
First step.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Mr. George Jones, we're going to call up Mr. Fields. And item five is discuss action to award the new Union Park concession and bathroom building to the, the low bidder, Johnson Construction Group, in the amount of $354,385.22. Funding will be allocated from SPOST funds and the project's located in post two.
Yes, sir. Good morning. So this is for the new bathroom concession stand building at Union Park. Anybody that's from Paulding County, they know that bathroom concession stand's been there for a long time. So we initially looked at remodeling the building that was there and come up with a new plan to build a new concession stand building up on the hill, kind of the corner of the parking lot. So it's an 850 square feet block building, boarding, batten, siding on the exterior with a rock skirt around the bottom, men's bathroom, women's bathroom, concession stand with a pass-through window. Johnson Construction Group was the lowest bidder. We had multiple bids on it, although they have not worked with us in the county. They do work with a lot of other counties and cities in this area on the same type of construction, buildings, bathrooms, park areas. Called multiple references, they all checked out. Everybody bragged on their work, their quality of work, their efficiency. Looking forward to using them.
Any questions?
Just to be clear, Jeremiah, this, this is not a rebuild of the existing building. This is a new building, right? It's in a new location on the property.
Yes, sir. Yep. Once this new building is constructed and opened, we will demo the existing building that is there now.
Great job, Jeremiah. We've been waiting for this update for quite some time. And thank you, Michael, for taking us out there and walking us through a couple of years ago to actually see what needed to be done. I think it's a great project and thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Reports from committees and departments, we don't have any this morning. No one signed up for public participation on this little sheet. Consent agenda items, I need to read them this morning. Consideration of the following items. Item six is to approve the six-month extension to commence operations from Arpit Patel for his South Side Package Distilled Spirits License originally issued in May 23rd, 2023, which is currently set to expire on November the 23rd, 2024. That's with Chief Hess and his leadership on that one. Item seven is adopt fleet maintenance job classification and job description for an Assistant Fleet Maintenance Manager. And Ms. Palmer has that one. Number eight is to confirm the 2025 Paulding Board of Commissioners designated holiday schedule. Ms. Palmer also. Item nine is to declare the items listed on your agenda as surplus and approve their disposal through auction, trade, or donation. That's Ms. Pollard's area. And item 10 is discuss, or to authorize the chairman entered into a development agreement with CW Tabor LLC in the estimated amount of $209,300. This is for participation in the mitigation of traffic concerns and consisting of 109.1 acre tract of land located off Mount Tabor Church Road in post one. Mr. Jones has that one. Item 11 is to approve the request by Paulding County Sheriff's Office to retire or surplus the following service weapons for Sergeant Mike Willingham and Deputy James Ward retiring in November. Sheriff Gary Gullidge and Chief Deputy Colonel Chad Hunter retiring in December. Glock 21 SF serial number SWF 619 and SWF 630 Glock 47 serial numbers. I'm not going to read them. You can, you can see them on your page there. And those last two are Remington 870 serial number RS 85754Z. Item 12 is approve the amendment to the September 10th, 2024 minutes. Consent item 17 to remove the Airport Authority representatives for the City of Dallas and the City of Hyrum. These two representatives are nominated and confirmed now by the, the cities themselves. We have no old business this morning. Getting into the new business. Item 13 is discuss action to approve the sewer easement and temporary construction easement of the existing Dallas sewer through the undeveloped western portions of the Brawley Sports Complex. And Mr. Phillips is going to talk with us about this when we clarify it.
Commissioners, back in 2005, the Board of Commissioners granted a sewer easement to the city. At that time, Dallas has installed that sewer easement, but as they have gone back to expand and widen and put some more capacity in there, they have come to the realization that we can't exactly find the meets and bounds description of the easement. It's been recorded, but the description itself is missing. So the purpose of this easement is to reaffirm that easement and give them a little bit more room to do the expansion that they're planning on doing. This runs along Griffin Creek in the extreme western side of the Brawley Sports Complex. This area is completely undeveloped and there's no, there's no improvements in that area other than the sewer easement itself. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. And I omitted, or was remiss in asking the, the panel here, the Board of Commissioners, if they'd like to move any of the consent agenda items into regular business. Of course, if you'd like to do that, we'll, we'll discuss it here shortly. Hearing none, we'll leave it on the consent. Item 14 is discuss action to move forward with Petra Architecture for the design plan for the renovation of Fire Station One in the amount of $58,200. Fire tax funds will be used for this project and the project's located in post one. And Mr. Jeremiah Fields, again.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So Fire Station One was built in 1996 and it was originally built to house one fireman and six administrative personnel. So it was not really designed for a fire station, firehouse. So this agenda item is for Petra to design a plan that is better suitable for a fire station. More open space, more sleeping quarters, bigger kitchen. The building's actually, has flooded multiple times over the years. We have the drainage issue, the water issue fixed. So this is for the remodel design of Fire Station One.
Questions, comments for Jeremiah?
Where is that located?
At 61278 behind Kroger.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we'll move back to Mr. George Jones on item 15. Discuss action authorized the chairman entered into a supplemental agreement with Thompson Engineering Incorporated in the amount of $115,143.83 for engineering design services for the Buchanan Street at State Route Six Business-West Memorial Drive Intersection Improvement Project. Funding will be allocated from SPOST and the project's located in post two and also post four. George?
I caught Buchanan too, but people know I'm not from around here if I said that. So. On September 28th, 2021, the Board of Commissioners approved a preliminary engineering design contract with Thompson Engineering in the amount of $117,320.11. This was for the design of a single-lane roundabout at the affomented intersection of SR6 Business, which encompasses Buchanan Street and also West Memorial and also the city portion of West Memorial. So it's a three-legged intersection. As the project went along, it kind of stalled out due to essentially staffing issues on the county side and Thompson Engineering, as y'all know, we've had some issues with specialty engineering staffing, keeping our projects moving along. Paulding DOT recently met with Thompson Engineering, the design engineer for this contract, and discussed restarting the project. In order to complete the engineering design for the project, a supplemental agreement is needed. Like I said, this project does have coordination with Georgia DOT as two legs of the project, our Georgia DOT routes and also the city. So it's a little more involved than just a typical county route, roundabout project. Basically, the additional hours for the project in funds, we're requesting a supplemental in the amount of $115,143.83. At this point in time, we spent $39,000 on the project. The new overall engineering services agreement with Thompson Engineering would be $232,463.94. This is in line with other roundabouts that we and also other local agencies have basically had for design costs. So it is in line with that. If approved, the funding will be provided by SPOST.
Any questions?
George, do you have a, an estimated date for completion of the design documents?
On this one, I don't, again, we have to look at the right of way. I can get that to you, Commissioner. Obviously, that's one of the things that as we meet and get this approved, we're going to want a set date of, you know, a realistic date of when this can go forward to construction.
Okay, thank you.
On the agenda, it says SPOST funds and Paulding County Water System Funds, which is right. You just said SPOST.
There's another project for water funds. It's not this one. There's a.
Okay, so that needs to be.
I think that was a mistake. The project for land acquisition at Dabbs Bridge and Harmony Grove Church Road.
For attendees this morning, our county managers refer to this agenda as the George Jones Program. So we'll move right along to 16. Discuss action to authorize the chairman to execute a contract for the sale of realty for parcel three, tract one of the Dabbs Bridge Road at Harmony Grove Church Road Intersection Improvement Project in the amount of $115,300. SPOST funds and Paulding County Water System Funds will be used for the purchase of this tract of property and it's located in post four.
Say Chairman, DOT has a lot of excellent staff that gets these projects moving along. So it's, like I said, it's definitely a team effort. Like I said, the folks behind the. the scenes really deserve the, you know, the note, basically the, you know, basically being seen. But like I said, they, a lot of them don't really like to be noticed. Engineers aren't typically noted for being, you know, outgoing and such, but, you know.
No way.
Hard to believe. Paulding County has programmed a roadway and intersection improvement project at Dabbs Bridge and Harmony Grove Church Road in Post Four. Project include a improved intersection of Harmony-Dabbs, realigning slightly to the north to improve the sightlines and also a new traffic signal and also a three-lane roadway section going from the intersection of Dabbs Bridge Road up to Bob Rogan Drive on Harmony Grove Church Road. The projects in the preliminary engineering phase and preliminary right-of-way plans have been completed. Concurrently, the water system is constructing the Northeast Loop Transmission Main, which is approved by the Board of Commissioners in December 2022. Obviously, the Paulding DOT and Paulding Water working together reduce conflicts for both their project and our roadway project. Paulding DOT has agreed to work with the water system to advance purchase right-of-way for our project, which will obviously help them with their intersection, with their water main project, which will allow for the water main placement to be down the outside of the future limits of our project and on the back five feet of the new right-of-way. Paulding DOT had a property appraisal commission for Parcel Three Tract One to estimate the market value of the property and the area required by the county for the roadway project. DOT and Water System presented the appraisal for Parcel Three Tract One to the Board of Commissioners during closed session on September 10, 2024. The fair market value of the property was appraised by an appraisal commissioned by Paulding DOT in the amount of $60,000 per acre. At this time, we have finalized negotiations with the owner of Parcel Three Tract One in agreement to purchase 1.911 acres of property and temporary easement, which is .06 acres at an estimated cost, at a cost of $115,300. Essentially, recommend the board to approve this tract, which will, again, help our roadway project and also the water main project. If approved, SPOST funds will be for the majority of the project, and Water System Funds will also be used for a portion of this project.
Any questions? Okay. 17 is discuss action to approve a project funding allotment increase to Russell Standard in the amount of $70,000 for the completion of the fiscal year 2024 by two minutes surface treatment contract. Funding for this allotment will be provided from general funds. Roads in this project are located in all four posts.
Yes, sir. On June 11, 2024, Paulding DOT advertised, I'm sorry, awarded, the Board of Commissioners awarded the FY 2024 Surface Treatment Contract on 17 county roads. The project was awarded to Russell Standard in the amount of $454,155.50. As you said, all the roads in the contract were located in all posts. During the contract execution, additional roads were identified for candidates for surface treatment and were added to the list of roads. The contractor basically agreed to add those roads to the contract without adding additional funding for traffic control or mobilization. The three roads that were added were the unpaved portion of Electric Dam Road in Post Four, Gum Springs Road in Post Four, and also the unpaved section of Smith Road in Post One. The total allotment requested to complete the project is $70,000. That's essentially 14.8% of the currently contracted amount. The allotment essentially encompasses that additional roads in the project. About $67,000. There's additional $3,000 that the company, that's basically due to the variation when you actually go out and surface treat these roads. They're not all the standard width the whole way through. It varies. So, there's a little bit of difference what actually came, we thought estimated to be done and what actually was performed in the field. If approved, this allotment will be allocated from the general fund.
Questions, comments from all the posts here? I noticed your deputy's in the audience. I wonder if she agrees with all these reports. Erica, raise your hands. Everybody, I know who you are. All right.
She better. She does all the work.
I won't even say anything. All right. Last chance to excel here, George. Discuss action on item 18. Discuss action to authorize the chairman to enter into a supplemental agreement with Pond and Company in the amount of $21,770.61 for pre-construction and construction administration services for the intersection roundabout project of State Route 101 at State Route 120. Funding will be allocated from SPOST and projects located in Post Two.
Yes, sir. This is a long time coming. As y'all know, on January 10, 2017, the Board of Commissioners approved entering into a preliminary engineering design contract with Pond and Company in the amount of $201,105.63 for a single lane roundabout at the intersection of State Route 101, State Route 120. Obviously, these are two state highways. However, a significant amount of traffic in that post utilizes that intersection. It's very busy. The Board of Commissioners elected to take on the responsibility of improving that intersection. Obviously, at that time, SPOST funds were allocated towards the engineering of the project. Subsequently, Paulding DOT was awarded $2 million in funding from the Georgia DOT towards the construction of the project. On April 30, 2024, the project was awarded to Wilson Construction Management for the construction of the project. It's a 30-month construction timetable. Since the project has been awarded and the contractor has been on site, Pond and Company will need to continue to provide pre-construction and construction services for the project, such things as requests for information, seven-day inspection for erosion control, also just answering questions through the lifespan of the project. We've set up $21,770.61 towards that. Funding for the supplemental will be allocated from SPOST if approved.
Last chance for questions, George.
I have one. George, just in the short version, can you give a long version on how long it actually takes from first thought of a roundabout and what you have to do to get there? Because I think a lot of our citizens don't understand what you have to go through to get to the end. So, in short, can you just kind of explain that?
You're making it tough.
I know.
You know, let's just say like this particular project, let's use this for example. Again, this is two state highways. So, you have Paulding County DOT, Paulding County Board of Commissioners commissioning work on two state highways. We have to have their permission. We have to meet their standards. They have more stringent standards than the county because, again, they get federal money and state money. So, there's environmental, there's historical, ecological. Very, again, they're all very important things. However, you have to go through these processes, and you have to go through them step by step through the preliminary engineering phase. You know, obviously, you have right-of-way phase, utilities phase. These projects take a very long time to go through, working with the district. You know, if this was a state project, this would be, you would still be in the preliminary engineering phase. So, again, these roundabout projects on state highways, you're talking, you know, five, seven years if things go right. And things, you know, take longer such as right-of-way acquisition or condemnations takes even longer.
Perhaps one of the happiest people in the room is going to be Tabitha Pollard, who's going to be going on that roundabout every day twice.
We try to keep finance happy.
We did it just for you, Tabitha. I'm sorry you had to wait so long, but...
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
For many good reports there, informational. Item 19 is discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign the Radio Communications Tower Easement with Paulding County Board of Education for the All Good Elementary School Site. And Mr. David Mumford to report.
320 also.
Okay. Thank you. Also, the next item, so we can combine them, is item 20. Discuss action to authorize the chairman to sign the Radio System Communications Tower Easement with the Paulding County Board of Education for the Pool Elementary School Site. Mr. David Mumford, you got these two, sir?
Good morning.
Morning.
These two sites were identified when the, our new radio system design was worked out by Motorola. The school board has graciously allowed us to have the property on these two school sites. There's no money involved transaction between the county and the school system. This, they're one of the larger users on our radio system. So, they have all the buses, the schools, their safety officers, they're all on our radio system. And so, you know, we, they allowed us to build the compounds. And the easement gives us permission to construct, operate, and maintain the radio system, other tower sites on their land. And so, it's, we're responsible for maintaining the towers and the shelters itself, plus the area inside the compound and about 20 feet outside the compound, keep it clear brush. And on the All Good Elementary site in particular, we're responsible for maintaining the driveway that leads from their parking lot to the backside of the, of the past playground area where the, where the compound is located.
Any questions for David?
The school board has already approved this on their side.
Good job. All right. Moving to item 21. Discuss action to approve and increase, discuss action to approve and increase in the guaranteed maximum price for the Northeast Loop Transition Main project in the amount of $1,780,535.50 for a total price not to exceed $15,970,535.50. The increased funding will be from ARPA funds, the projects located in Post One and Post Four. Mr. Ray Rooton, we got a new face.
Not quite as tall as George. Good morning. Just wanted to touch base before I got into this project and the next. These funds for this project are ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act. We were fortunate enough in '21 to receive federal funds of which we've put that to four projects, which are the Copper Mine Water Reclamation Facility Expansion, the Northeast Loop Water Main, and Pumpkin Vine Water Reclamation Facility Intermediate Needs, as well as some funds to the airport. We chose those projects from water because those are ones that we needed to implement. The Richland Creek Reservoir right now is supplying two-thirds of the water. We used ARPA funds to go ahead and get the design set up to tie that over to where we can utilize the full plant of the Richland Creek. During the process of installing, we've installed both ends. And when we came to the middle section and the easement acquisition that was involved, we did have some developer-owned properties of which the route of the Transmission Main was going to increase by quite a bit. And in addition to that, we're trying to avoid condemnation, which condemnation would be involved, of which from the standpoint of acquiring the land afterwards, we would be responsible for whatever the developer came up with a price on their property, which left us not knowing the final price. So, we have worked with transportation to reroute the middle section down Harmony Grove, Harmony Grove Church Road. And as part of that, moving it from being cross-country to being actually next to the edge of pavement, we've got more utilities, we've got more traffic control. I promised George a lot of paving to help get this done because in working with this, we've got additional paving that will be involved. And we also have the crossing, where we're crossing Pumpkin Vine Creek. It'll now be a long aerial crossing versus going under the creek. So, we're looking, I'm looking for your support in approving an increase of the project of $1.78 million, $535,050.50 from ARPA funds to complete this project, which will hopefully be completed with your approval in April of 2025.
Questions for Ray? We'll move into the next one, Ray. Item 22 is discuss action to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the Pumpkin Vine WRF Immediate Needs Expansion, not to exceed $14,421,413. The project will be funded from ARPA, American Rescue Plan money. And the Renewal Extension Fund Project is located in Post Four.
There are three phases to this project. The first phase funded by ARPA was $3.424,210, and that was taken at the design for the intermediate needs and the expansion altogether. We received a cost for the project from the engineers and the company that will be building it, which is Ruby Collins. Their price for doing the project originally was just the intermediate needs, but we have increased it to add blowers and additional piping to be ready to receive the expansion, which will come after we complete the intermediate needs. This portion of the project is $13,421,413 for doing the initial phase of the project. We've asked for a 7.5% owner-controlled contingency for any expansion needs that we need to address in this phase. The original cost of the overall project that was given in the original guaranteed maximum price for Phase One has been decreased from $17 million down to the $13 million that we are looking for approval today. And the $1 million, which is the 7.5% contingency, will allow us to address any of the intermediate needs to future expansion. This project's needed because currently we have a few, 3,200 lots on the ground that are ready for development. The expansion that will follow this will give us through 2060. But for right now, this project will allow us to use the full 2.5 million gallons that we have at Pumpkin Vine, which will more than cover us for the next 12 years before we have to look at doing the expansion. The expansion, however, we'd like to get done within the next few years after completion of this project. So, I'm looking for your support in doing the intermediate needs phase of this project.
Any questions?
I kind of jumped from subject to subject with the two. I apologize.
Just to be clear, Ray. A lot going on in water. Quick keys. Go ahead, please.
Just to be clear, Ray, the original GMP was $13,421?
That is correct.
That's correct.
And we are asking for that and a 7.5% contingency.
All right. Thank you much, Ray. We'll go to 23. Discuss action to approve a Conservation Easement with Southeastern Trust for Parks and Land and the corresponding right of first refusal, baseline documentation report, and stewardship plan on Paulding, on Paulding County Tax Parcel, R085633, consisting of approximately 106 acres along Raccoon Creek. And secondly, to accept a $150,000 grant form, I'm sorry, a grant from the Nation, the Nature Conservancy for county property acquisition. And number three is to approve $150,000 grant to the Nature Conservancy to assist in the construction of a Controlled Burn Headquarters Building for dug-down corridor in partnership with the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. And number four, to authorize the chairman to execute all the documentation related there, too. And this is all of what Katie and Allison talked to us about. And County Attorney Phillips... And County Attorney Phillips is going to.
Yes, I just combined it in, all into one, and they've spoken. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to ask them to answer them.
I have a question, just for the public's knowledge. This 150, it sounds like we're just trading money, but basically they pay us and then as they do things, we pay them back. Is that how that works?
The first 150 from the Nature Conservancy is technically for property acquisition and in exchange, as a part of the overall plan, we're going to be sending $150,000 back in a grant. There's going to be three milestones in that grant. When the project completes certain things, there'll be a $50,000 disbursement and then another 15 and another 15.
Thanks.
Commissioner Dunn, when you give your wife money, does she ever give any back? Number 24, we're getting close, guys, is discuss action to approve a development agreement between Starlight Homes of Georgia LLC and Paulding County for $300,000 financial contribution from the developer to aid in the completion of the Mount Tabor Pressure Zone. And this project's located in post one, and Mr. Ray Wooten's back.
Okay, the Mount Tabor Pressure Zone, Paulding County guarantees right now water service at 1130. There are partial of land up along Mount Tabor Ridge, Mount Tabor Church Road that are above the 1130 elevation. So we began years ago putting together different developer agreements to cover additional pipe, modifications at the Highway 120 pump station, and gathering funds to add a tank to make sure that we can provide this 1,430 acres with proper fire protection and water flow. This is the third of many agreements of which the developer at Starlight Homes, which is the Mount Tabor Church, the Mount Tabor Ridge Estates Development at Mount Tabor Church Road, just across from the park, they will be donating $300,000 as part of this overall improvement for this upper zone. And we'd like you to approve this development agreement for us to be able to receive the additional funding.
Like I said before, you got a lot going on, young man. Item 25 is discuss action to adopt Resolution 2024-30 authorizing Paulding County Board of Commissioners to agree to submit a pre-application for funding through, through the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Board of Commissioners further agrees that in the event Paulding County's pre-application is recommended for funding by the Department of Natural Resources, Paulding County certifies and assures that it has the ability and the intention to finance 50% of the total project cost and will move forward with due diligence to prepare or have prepared appropriate documentation required for the formal Land and Water Conservation Fund application. Ms. Tabitha Pollard.
After all that, I'm not sure that anything else needs to be said. So, but this is an application with the Land and Water Conservation Fund to allow us to apply for a million dollars. It'll be used for the reservoir park, and as we know, that's one of our next large parks with reservoir many years ago. Kind of funny that we, when we were building the reservoir, it wasn't, the main question wasn't, when can I drink water from the reservoir? It's when can I fish in the water, in the reservoir? So this is maybe a step towards that direction. It helps us to get the, the infrastructure in place, the parking, the trailhead, the fishing pier, and that project is fairly expensive and this hopefully will be a grant towards, contributed towards this project. So unless you have any questions.
I do, of course. The, is this going to include any kind of canoeing or other boating, kayaking on the lake? Is this part of the plan?
There is a project out right now that does include kayaks.
Michael, you want to say anything?
No, sir. But I will. Part of this, part of the grant does include some launch ramps and things of that nature that are floating, so that it will be included in that. That is being designed. This is a match, you know, and, and what it does is it lets the government know that yes, we are going to be, as a commission, you are going to be committed to matching that when it, and hopefully if it is approved, yes.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions for Michael or Tabitha?
I'm one of those people that can't wait to fish.
All right, thank you all. At this time, it's not on the, you have anything else? It's not on the agenda, but our county clerk is here and always prepared. Raise your hand, Rebecca. She has a test that it's a multiple choice, and if you score high enough on it, you can leave today. Thanks, Don, I appreciate that. County manager says, don't ever try to be funny. I ask conclusion of regular business, public participation on non-agenda items, no one has signed up. This is the time, and I really can't believe Katie and Allison are still with us. Thanks for hanging in there for the duration. This is the time when the commissioners get to announce something or celebrate something. And I want to start out, we mentioned this in our meeting two weeks ago, and there's some pictures that have been taken, but this is about Team Paulding coming together for Hurricane Helene relief. The goal was to fill one truck of supplies. I'll just watch this and I'll read the rest of it. The goal was to fill one truck full of supplies and send to the victims after the devastating effects of Hurricane Helene. When word got out, our community came together to provide. We ended up filling three trucks, a plane loaded with water, and several amazing citizens hauling trailer loads of water to the victims. This was more than a donation drive, it was neighbors helping neighbors, showing what it means to stand together. We'd like to recognize all of our county employees and all of the Paulding community residents who stepped up and helped volunteer. I think he's replaying it, right? We'll let it play out here the second time. Anybody else got anything they want to celebrate? We don't have any executive session today, so I'll just entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Kaker. I'll second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone oppose?
We stand adjourned.
Thank you everyone for, for being here today. It's a little bit longer, longer than usual, but we had a lot of things to get done.